Welcome to this regular meeting of the Biloxi City Council on June 18th, 2024. Being that there is a change to the agenda, do have a motion to accept the changes?
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Gaians. All in favor? Unanimous votes. Ms. Carey, will you read those changes?
To the policy agenda, we're removing item 4A until July 2nd, 2024 for the ordinance for a zoning map amendment for 12105 Cedar Lake Road. Removing 4B until July 2nd, 2024, ordinance for a zoning map amendment for 1654 Beach Boulevard. To the consent agenda, we're adding item 5Y, resolution approving submission of a defense community infrastructure program grant on behalf of Mississippi State University Research. Adding 5Z, resolution amending the budget to authorize payment to the Maritime and Seafood Industry Museum in the amount of $15,000 for relocation of the Hurricane Camille Memorial. And adding 5AA, resolution authorizing expenditures to United and Blue in the amount of $1,000.
I'll move the agenda as amended.
And I'll second.
All right. Motion to move as amended by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Gaians. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote. This brings us to the presentation agenda. Mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Welcome, everyone, to our meeting today. My report was short and sweet, but you can see something on the screen right there which represents what the welcome signs. You look at the arch, which is, I guess, noted in Main Street Biloxi emblem. So that particular sign is a joint sign that will be located at Bayview as you come off Interstate I-10. But the basic look and feel that tells you which way to go if you want to get to the basin, to the casinos in downtown. But that is a template that we'll be using throughout the city. The welcome Biloxi will be raised letters. And I think we're in a mode to have that aluminum-based sign and whatever things go in the middle can be used. But the template is the welcome to Biloxi, but that is hopefully aluminum and/or composite. We're actually taking some bids. But that is, that sign will be located right there as you come off I-110. And that's underway right now. But the look and feel that we're using a number of places will be that welcome to Biloxi with raised letters. And then whatever we need to do in the middle, whether it's go left or go right or whatever, that'll be the look and feel that will be throughout the city.
Mayor, about how much is?
That sign is about $8,000.
Eight?
Eight, yeah.
Eight, not eight.
As, yeah, 8, 0, 0, 0. It's in. But it's split between Great Economic Development Foundation and us. But, you know, we'll have a number of templates. And I think that size is 16 feet, the arch is?
16 by 20.
16 by 20. Again.
Mayor, I got a need over by Cedar Lake and Pops Ferry. There used to be a sign there.
Yeah.
And when we took it down, there's several people that have been asking over the years, you know, could we put a sign back up? Would that, this be a potential?
That was the intent. It was a number of places and that we can locate that welcome to Biloxi and then whatever you need details in it. But that, been examining and redirecting some of the artwork. And John and the whole group has been involved in saying, this is what we're living with. So you will see that, that particular sign with those particular letters and signage on the bay. But you'll expect to see them throughout the city marked, you know, appropriately. So whatever we're trying to, you know, direct folks, that's what you'll see.
Is this addition to the ones we have?
It'll be replacing the ones we have.
This one will replace all?
There's an old wooden sign right now. You come in, it's been, you know, a little bit of skyline.
This is replacing it, okay.
The wood part, but there's some sort of lattice works that has, you know, Rotary Club and different things. They'll stay there, but this will replace that on top of it.
And how fast is it going to be put up? You already had them made?
As fast as they can make them. Again, we're bidding these out and we're asking for aluminum versus composite or wood. And in this case, this will be wood, but raised letters on top of the wood. But those are the colors, and that's the look and feel.
Are they going to be lit?
They could be.
Like a light shining on them or something like that?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I don't know if you have lights.
I don't think we have lights on it now. On the bay. We certainly could have.
Who's?
This particular Bloom, I think. Is that right, John? Bloom is putting this stuff together right now.
Who is helping underwrite this?
Great Economic Development Foundation.
And they're going to underwrite a portion of the eight, or our portion is eight?
Split the costs. Of $8,000 to bill a sign, so we're coming up with four, they're coming up with four.
I got you.
Greater Biloxi Economic is paying 4,000.
Got you. Thank you.
So, but that's the 16-foot sign. We may, you know, reduce that based on, you know, whether we need eight foot or 16 foot or whatever. Okay? And I think Chief has provided some July special event information to y'all. And I think that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Be no departmental reports. We'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence.
I was going to ask him about the signs, but he brought up, that's pretty good. So one time he's ahead of me this time.
Don't talk.
That's hard for you to do. It's hard for you to catch.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we know that.
Yeah, okay.
You know how you jerkers laughs off.
Yeah, come on.
That's a Croatian.
I want to get out of here at 2:15, so.
All right, that's it.
Guys?
Uh-oh, wow.
You are ready?
Too fast for me.
Yeah.
Let me, let me back up on my report. I'm going, leaving here after this, this meeting to a tourism event in New Orleans at the World War II Museum. It's called SCU. And it really is a sort of a regional tourism gathering. And we, it was very successful last year. So, you know, I'm not leaving at 2:15. We're going to go further, our cause, City of Biloxi in New Orleans at the World War II Museum right after this. But it's a good event. And, you know, everything, you know, our economies are tied together. And we'll, we'll push the cause this afternoon. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Amen.
Hey, Jackson, can I ask you, Mike, could you give us an update? How's everything been going with you and your wife?
Oh, yeah, good to see you.
I hadn't seen you in a while, so kind of give us a little update, because we've been praying for you and her.
Progress, you're making progress.
She's out of the ICU and doing better.
Well.
Got a long haul, long haul ahead of us.
Prayers and thoughts with her and Mike and whole family.
Amen.
Yes, amen.
She gave me the evil eye when I said I was covering the council.
Yeah.
Imagine that.
She's back.
We just hope everything will work out for you and your wife.
I'll fill you in later.
All right.
Amen.
That's it.
All right, Mr. Gaians?
Yeah, just wanted to put some Juneteenth this weekend. Thanks Sherri Bell for all the hard work. We had animals out there. We celebrated different people in the community. One of our old school coaches, Coach Rat, and also one of our esteemed principals, Ms. Susan Hunt. So I just want to acknowledge that Juneteenth went very, very well on the town green. I had the opportunity earlier today, we invited our Congressman, Mikey Zell, to our Rotary Club meeting. And he talked to us about a bill that was just recently signed that, that could give us an opportunity for more, have more housing opportunity within our, within our city. So I'm going to set up further meetings with our congressman so we can continue that quest. And last but not least, I, I know that we're getting close on one year of our special events. And I would like that at that one-year mark that we set up a workshop with the council about the Special Events Committee so we can kind of help knock out some of the bugs that's in it. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Mr. Tizdo?
Yes, a couple of things. On the Katrina Memorial, I know we were talking about replacing the glass. I think a couple of months ago, Dunaway Glass was going to do some work out there. And now I understand that there needs to be some carpentry work.
Yeah, if you don't mind me responding.
Sherri, go ahead.
Look at, at it. And it's, it's beyond saving, in my opinion. And especially since that in-one-inch-six glass has been broken three times. Is that not right, Sherri? To do, I think we'd be better served to, to remove that and relocate that to probably a safer situation at the visitor center, at least that, that cabinetry and document those pieces of, and then replace. There's a black, you know, marble.
Right.
To put some engraving in, in that. It pretty much defines some of the things that are on plaques. I think that's the move that I suggested. And it's, I don't think, in my opinion, it's worth trying to redo what was done and damaged a number of times.
There's also some in-ground lighting at the base of that wall. Some of those needing to, some of those, I don't know, can lights or whatever need some attention.
Yeah, well, again, that old technology there with regard to the kind of lights and then the problems we have with electric, I think we'd be better served to do some LED on, on the, you know, up higher than, than on the ground, but give the same effect. So that's the move. We haven't really finalized, I think, the dollars. But, you know, the places where the cabinetry, that thing has some work and it's just be better done in another place, I think. And then update the, the back wall where it's sitting in front of.
Our next council meeting will be a night meeting, July 2nd. I don't know, could you update us at that time? Okay. A number of delineators when you come off the Pops Ferry Bridge, south, south of the bridge. I know a couple of them have been, you know, people run over those things. But also, they're not as reflective. Some of them aren't as they used to be. Just, I don't.
Date on that, Billy Ray, the delineators needed throughout the city are going to be shipped, I think, today. But there's a number of them through every place where it has been worn down. So they're en route right now.
Thank you, Mayor. Edgewater Park sidewalks, there's a number of elderly people out there. And throughout, I walked that subdivision with one of the residents and took pictures. This was probably a year ago. And sent them all to Craig and hadn't heard anything more. But if somebody could check on that, just, it's not that, that every spot I photograph needs to be replaced. Should be at some point, but some of the, the difference in height between some of the sections of pavement may be inch and a half or two. Like I said, there are a lot of elderly people that walk out there in that neighborhood. South of the Pops Ferry Bridge, from Pops, from the bridge to Pass Road, you got these manhole covers. Some of them are, well, they're a little lower than, than the road. And I know we've got some depressions and every once in a while a pothole. But there are, I get a lot of complaints about that. I don't know if y'all hear from other folks. But is it possible to put collars around those manhole covers and raise them to the street level and be done with it, or?
There's a number of opportunities, Mr. Christie. We talked a little bit about, you come up there in case I get technically.
Oh, you calling the manhole lady specialist?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Christie. Your, your street name is Manhole Cover.
Those manholes are right in the driving lanes, which it adds to the situation. So what we have looked at, and against millions of dollars of solutions to, to keep that to one side or the other, where instead of being driven over, and there are some engineering solutions, costly solutions, that, you know, our main focus is, I think, on the 19th, which happens to be tomorrow, the main goal is to get that extension done. And then we can concentrate from the extension towards the bridge with regard to, there's about six manholes that we have issues with. Yeah, but it's, you know, a couple of million dollars worth of solution.
But if I understand.
It's not an easy fix, unfortunately. We did look at it. They have to be moved out of the driving lane. And so it's very costly. So that's, we're kind of waiting for Pops Ferry Extension to finish or get started or see where we are with that before we move into that next section.
Right. And that improvement for the Pops Ferry is going to, excuse me, go a little bit north, maybe what?
Yeah, maybe to the first.
Not even 100 yards?
Yeah, maybe to the first intersection.
Can't remember the name of the street there, but.
Yeah, that's right.
Anyway, wouldn't it be cheap, other than that, wouldn't, couldn't you just put collars on these things or no, it's?
It's not, it's not that easy. Collars, collars, you still have to tear the road up to get the collars in. It's not so much as, as the lids, it's, it's, it's the cars hitting it repetitively.
Like I'm an engineer. I'm not. I trust your judgment.
Yeah.
It's in the middle of the lane. That's, that's probably.
In the middle of the line, the tires hit it continuously. So you put collars in, even if you put collars underneath the lids, it's still going to continue to just beep.
All right. Thank you, Christie.
You're welcome.
There is an immunization fair for, for parents out there who have children, school-aged children. There's an immunization fair at the Lopez School Campus, July 12th and 15th, from 8:30 until 3:00 PM. It's the partner, partnering with the XL by Five program is Coastal Family Health. So if you have school-aged children and you need immunizations, there's no charge. Just show up on that date with identification and your child, and they'll, they'll take care of that before the school year starts for you. Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Madam President. First, condolences to the Schumeta family. We lost an icon, Captain Pete. And he, he had a big impact and certainly a self-made man on all his endeavors and all his achievements and to the entire Schumeta family. Couple other things. Charter boats, traditionally, and I think I've had a conversation a few months ago, but traditionally, if they pay in advance, they get a discount. I've had several conversations. I'd, I'd like to propose, not at this meeting, but at maybe one of our subsequent meetings, that we consider a resolution if they pay a year in advance, that we can give them that 10% discount. And it gives us their commitment for a full year instead of just a partial year, six months. But I just want to include that in my report. I'll get with the clerks and the administration maybe to draft something that works to maybe amend the agreement. AJ Holloway Sportsplex, looks like it's coming along pretty good. I looked at the boys' baseball, looks like three of the fields. We've installed not only the turf fields, but the sod, still working on, on the fourth one. So things look like it's progressing well. But on the softball side, girls' softball season is coming up fast. Do we have an update? If it, do we think it's going to hit that timetable that they'll be able to use those fields for girls' softball? Or is that in jeopardy of not making it?
Again, we, we're not going to touch it till it's ready. And, and we've got some, some, some opinions coming from the Mississippi State folks, as well as some other folks that have helped us on, on what is the status. But the rains that we've had have indicated some, some delays. And I wouldn't go out on a limb to give you a date at this point. But in a couple of weeks, we could probably tell, in all cases, where football, soccer, and all the baseball, softball and youth baseball will be ready.
I didn't, I thought girls' softball was done. But anyway, on the softball side, all of it's turved.
And painted too. The softball's all painted at this point.
Yep. And they have a little bit more painting, and then it's going to be done. And then other than that, cleaning and pressure washing and organizing.
So my question, Director, are we in a holding pattern like the mayor said for girls' softball?
Well, we're in a holding pattern for all of them. We, we really don't want to open up, after discussing, we do not want to open up that complex until like the end of September.
Because of the heavy equipment and all the activity and
Fact.
the staging of supplies and all that kind of stuff.
Correct.
Do we have an alternative that we can offer them? Another field somewhere that we can offer them to play on if it does get pushed back a little bit further when their season wanted to open? Can we work toward finding an alternative field for girls' softball?
I'm kind of, all right, their season is over. So what season are they talking about? Next year?
Girls' softball coming up for the summer. I thought they were going to start practicing in the summer. Is that not, not the case?
No, that I know of. I haven't, I haven't heard anything unless you're talking about ball ball, but they haven't requested anything.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
I've gotten a couple of emails all forward to you. Maybe you can correspond.
Please.
Okay, all right.
Along those lines, sir, we looked about football and, you know, that maybe be able to use some of those fields if it's in good enough shape to offset any problems we have with irrigation going on, on the four, the three fields, I guess, that have been done. So we do have some alternatives for that, football and soccer.
Football, soccer.
Yeah. That's it. And the big baseball, too.
Director, I got one more question. And I know it's raw right now with the dirt and everything that they're leveling and continue to work on, on the soccer that y'all mentioned. What, what is the projected date? I'm not holding us to it, but we have to have kind of a projected completion date for soccer?
They were given an extension to the end of July.
For soccer?
End of July for the soccer and football.
They're going to be able to put sod on and, and we would be able to play in a month?
Correct. Yeah, end of July.
Woo. It's a lot of sod to make sure it's stable.
Yep.
Okay.
They, we were told, Jamie was told today, that they're getting ready to start the sod process.
Okay.
It's not ready. But if it's not ready, then we've got some softball, turf, as well as the big baseball to, to fill in for that.
Have other avenues to, to play football and soccer.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Director. This is for engineering. Sidewalk repair at 695. I know we had a conversation. Is there anything else that we need to do? Or is that in the hopper and teed up and targeted? And if so, would?
On which one again, I'm sorry?
This is Waters View, the little patch.
Oh, yes, yes.
The little patch on the sidewalk.
We're getting that scheduled. It's just one panel needs to be replaced. And so we will, we're getting a quote.
30 days, 60 days?
I'd give us 60 days because we've got the contractor doing some other work. And so to kind of get it in his queue. But I can't imagine it taking longer than that.
Okay. And Director, I really appreciate the reports that you provide us to have those on your list. It allows us to track and follow with you and follow-up questions. And it's kind of a team, team thing here.
Exactly. And I appreciate you bringing that one up because sometimes they do. And I encourage the rest of the council, you know, if there's something on that list and we haven't gotten to it yet, please bring it up to us. Because that one's a small little thing. It gets kind of lost in our list.
All right. So another one that was on the list, and this has to do with paving.
Yes.
And I know we passed an interlocal agreement. I don't know where these interlocal agreements are. But for Lamy Street.
Yeah.
We passed an interlocal agreement that the county would do a third, De'Auberville would do a third, and Biloxi would do a third. On that particular project, do you know where the interlocal?
I don't know anything about that. Usually, usually I don't get involved until they say, okay, hey, this, we're paving this. So I don't really know the status of that interlocal, but I can find out for you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Director.
Welcome.
Okay, Fern Drive, 149 Fern Drive. This is a major undertaking. It's a long easement, a long drainage ditch that's in the back of Waters View subdivision. And we, we've dug that ditch out in the past to try to alleviate some of the floodwaters. But then it, it grows all the growth in and around that area in the back of the yards. And we've went through like last year, and we kind of cleaned it up. The residents are asking, hey, it's getting, it's getting wild there again. Do we have anything on the horizon to?
We, we actually just put that one on our repair playlist, repair, replace list. We're going to try to put a pipe back there and get rid of some of it. Because it's very deep. We may still have to have a small swale there, but it would at least help keep it, the residents would be able to just mow it instead of us having to go in there with, or Public Works go in there with equipment. So that one is on our radar.
And that concludes my report.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes, just a few things. I spoke with a representative from the Thomaston Medical Park Project a couple of days ago. He said everything on their end is running good, running smooth. They are finishing up on securing some financing and hopefully, hopefully getting started very soon. They're anxious to get started. So hopefully that's going to continue moving along quickly. Cedar Lake Road, under the overpass, do we maintain that grass cutting-wise or does MDOT?
MDOT.
MDOT does. It's, and I know every, grass is growing everywhere. But I'm, I rode by and I just, I guess, don't pay attention a lot. But I happened to look yesterday, and it is absolutely terrible. I mean, growing up the concrete all the way up to the bridge from the street, all the concrete, when you get off the off-ramps, grass growing. And I don't know that there's anything we can do to speed that along with them. But I just know, I mean, it's heavily traveled and a lot of tourists come and go through that Cedar Lake there at the interstate. Go ahead.
I just got something. Mayor, could we, like we, we've done on the beach cleanup, could we or the county go clean that up and charge MDOT back? Or is that out of our?
You're going to do it on your own nickel.
You'll never see it. You'll never see it. Okay.
Bad enough and I, you know, which is, you know, a reasonable thing. But, you know, again, given the load and given the personnel. But, you know, contractually, I think, you know, we had talked a little bit about 20 of these, you know, X2 kind of services that people can handle lawn mowers and string mowers and stuff like that. I'll, I've been talking with Billy Ray, and we need crews to do it. I don't mind taking a shot because it's a, you know, it's what you see when you come to Biloxi.
Yeah, right.
And that's, you know, I'm with you. It needs to be done. But we don't have a lot of stroke with, you know, scheduling things.
Well, and I wasn't sure if it was us or MDOT. But, and I know it's just as big as a problem with them as it is us. And I hate to put more on, on our guys. But if we, if the chances are, we're probably not going to get MDOT to do it, then that may be something just to look at.
We can, yeah.
And finally, look, last but certainly not least, ditches, drainage, culverts, and grass cutting. Hopefully, we're still working on those temp employees. And hopefully that'll move forward sooner than later. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to public agenda where we have citizen comments. Total time that's allotted is 45 minutes. Each person gets three minutes each to speak. Once you reach the desk here, please sign your name and address as well as state it out loud for the record. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone on my right, your left? Anyone in the room? If not, citizen comments are now closed. Moving on to the policy agenda, Ms. Lucy, sorry, Ms. Carey?
Orders to grant a non-exclusive franchise to Unity Fiber Gulf Co. LLC to lay, construct, maintain, replace, repair optic fiber cable in the City of Biloxi.
Do I have a motion?
We'll move it.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Being a first reading, we will move on to Resolution D.
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plan approval for 1050 to Soto Street.
I'll move it.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence. Second by Mr. Gaians. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, Jerry, are they going to build a house on this empty lot?
Yes, sir. This lot is oversized. There's an existing house on one side of the lot. They're dividing it in half. And our understanding is, is they're going to build a house, which is all residential. That's the only thing they could build there.
Wouldn't that a little like a shed or something in the back of that piece of property? I know one, one that lives on one side. I thought there was something back there.
There's something back there, but I think it's on the property that faces the other direction, Mr. Lawrence.
So it's the other, okay.
Yes, sir.
This property is just empty.
Yes, sir. It is.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
No, that'd be it.
Mr. Gaians?
No.
Mr. Tizdo? Mr. Glavine?
I have none.
Mr. Shoemaker? All right. All in favor? Unanimous vote brings us to Resolution E.
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plan for 7128 Larkin Place East.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, David, if you wanted to make it. Award seven.
David?
David?
Your award. I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
But I'll move it.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Any discussion, Mr. Shoemaker?
No, I don't have any discussion.
Okay. Mr. Glavine?
Jerry, you want to comment?
Same thing here and on item F. They're right across the street from each other on Larkin. And what it is, is that they're oversized lots that already have a house on one end. And they're just dividing the property off so that they could sell the, the other lot.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote brings us to Resolution F.
Resolution granting minor subdivision final plan approval for 7145 Larkin Place West.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Shoemaker, second by Mr. Glavine. Any discussion, Mr. Shoemaker?
No.
Mr. Glavine?
I have none.
Self-explanatory? Okay. Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gaians. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, on H, the 218, what were they planning on doing with the emergency repair?
This is the one where we went in and did the repairs on B Pier and some of them on E Pier. Were the, were the panels that were cracking underneath? You know, we had the one that fell in. We had some others that were really bad. So we went ahead and fixed them while we were there.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what this is.
And on the other one, you have this one, J, for Boris. This is just a, in need, nothing particularly he's doing right now.
Right.
On J.
Yeah, on J, we have a, basically, it's like a repair, replace contract for the harbors. It's in place now. It just expired. So we rebid it. It, it's only good for like three years.
Just kind of keep them on retaining them.
That's right. That's right.
And on the X, Mike, a profo on a knee case on his L and M, or they update with everything, and they're taking care of problems, fixing people's property. and they're taking care of problems, fixing people's property, are they standing on top of everything?
Walt's out here, but yeah, we talked in Monday's meeting, they're in front of them with regard to, you know, what's left to clean up and replace, I know a couple of fences and a couple of sidewalk and driveways are working on that. Land, shapers have been doing most of the concrete that needs to be done in a timely way. Again, still shooting for, they have everything wrapped, you know, sometime in August.
Yeah, I know he was, most time y'all meet on Friday, discuss all that, that's why I except everything and being kept updated with him.
Yeah.
Only way he gets his attention, he pull that money.
Yeah, well.
They get that attention pretty quick.
He gets paid for what he does, if he doesn't do it, he get paid, no profit and not, not working.
All right. That's it.
Okay, Mr. Guines?
No.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, on Item I, which deals with the building of 321 Division Street, how much more has to be done to this building, seems every time we?
No, again, Chief, you might want to explain about the roll-up door and some of the other things that are done inside with some of the budget that you had in order to.
Right, so, so most everything's done now, we had this access controls problem that we needed to deal with, and then like the mayor said, there's one roll-up door that, I think there's only one roll-up door that we have to put in in order to get a large vehicle in and out.
You've got everything moved in there and utilizing, now the next play is examining what the opportunity is for a lean-to, which is to extend that roof to the east into the property that we know, which will give us a footprint of about 50 to another 100 feet that can be not out in the weather, but, you know, a lean-to against that.
Covered, but not, not any closed.
Yeah, you know, Billy Ray and PD would be sharing some of that, and we're actually getting some prices to put that up, as well as putting a concrete pad of 50 by 300, Christie?
Yeah.
So that's, again, that was part of the 200, we had original estimation of 200, 200.25, 220, $250,000 to do that. So we're not, you know, we're not complete with what we want to do to make that, you know, truly a multipurpose site.
All right, so the budget for that would basically purse in the building, renovating it, whatever you have to do, is two and a quarter.
That's what, yeah, right.
Okay, and that's coming out of the bond money, that five million dollar bond.
Yeah.
And the reason I ask is, don't forget, we still got to do Station 5, our Station 5, and we estimated that at about two and a half.
1.5, I estimated at 1.5.
You estimated that, but, but I don't, you're not an engineer either.
Yeah, but I'm the estimator, so anyway.
Well, we're all estimators, right, what'd you tell me? I bet your farm on that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, anyway, I just want to be sure that we have enough to get that station renovated out of that bond money, so that there's enough there, we got to do that, we've been talking about it for a couple of years and had the plans for probably five years.
Now, a couple of years since the 60s, so that's more than a couple of years.
What was taking you so long then? What were you doing in the 60s?
That was all BFF, before Fofa.
Yeah, okay. Let's see, also, I'm going to recuse myself on 5Z, which is the Camille Memorial, Peter, do I need to leave the room for that, for that recusal on 5Z? It's moving the Katrina Memorial, or paying some of the cost to move that, not Katrina, the Camille Memorial from the current location on the Episcopal property that's been sold to the Seafood Museum, so.
Recusals, recusals, I mean, get up to.
Okay, I'm good, all right, that's all, just if you'd note that, Carrie, for the minutes, thank you. That's it, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Glavine?
Yep, Item T, and this has, it's creating a capital project for the Brazier Bayou sediment removal, I just want to understand that we're as broad as possible with the funding that we've been allocated, I also want to recognize again, Casey Urie for going to bat last minute to be able to get this in, he basically pulled off a Biloxi miracle by getting us some funding for this project that we've been waiting a long time for, probably up in the top issues that I get calls on, saying I've noticed this, I've read it in the paper from those residents in and around the North Haven Sunrise and all those canals that are affected, but I just want to understand that this isn't a narrow scope of work, that we can make sure it's as broad as possible so we can enhance the property values and access to the waterfront. Is, is, are we mapping this project out accordingly? I don't want to spend $50,000 on a project when we got $400,000 to really do some enhancements in these canals.
Well, we, so we got, so this project is going to have only the money that had the Tylenol's money that we received from Casey Urie in it, and it's for the dredging of the bayou, and that meets, that falls within our budget, like that's what the project is expected to cost.
Okay.
So we should have enough funding to do everything that we were.
Sunrise, Brazier, all that area.
We could get permitted in that area, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
In the past, we've had a map of the bayous and those projects, and we've kind of redlined those, can we get an updated one specifically on what this is going to cover?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Director, I appreciate that, I have no other comments.
Mr. Schumaker?
No, Councilman Tisdale answered or asked the question I had, so I have nothing further.
Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous votes, are there any exceptions?
No.
All right, move on to code enforcement.
You've noted me, Carrie, you've noted me on Item C, thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Item A, Mary T. Nguyen, 410 Fowler Street, that case has been resolved. Island B, Jessica Reed, 186 Pat Harrison Street, that case has been resolved. Item C, Dorothy Bullard, 249 Nichols Drive, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Dorothy Bullard? If not, this case is closed.
Item D, Michael Clark Hester, 2592 Old Bay Road, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Michael Clark Hester? If not, this case is closed.
Item E, John Warwick and Mary Loper, 11043 Jolly Road, that case has been resolved.
All right, thank you, Jerry. Do I have a motion on the routine agenda?
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale, go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
Peter, do we have an update on the money that we have in the pipeline, everything updated?
I'm going to ask that report be tabled until July 2nd.
That'll work, thank you.
All right, anything else? All in favor of the routine? Unanimous votes, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn in memory of Peter Schumeta.
Okay.
I think we'll all second that.
We'll all second it, okay, all in favor? Unanimous votes, meeting adjourned.
We've got a workshop on employee pay.
Chief, could I see you real quick, up right off to the side.
Why are we supposed to have a, Dixon, why are we supposed to have a, something about the raises?
We have a workshop next on employee pay. So five-minute break.
I think that's coming from Diana, that's coming from the administrative side, I don't, and we typically haven't had something that early.
Anyway, yeah, that's not me, okay, thanks, Kim.
I told her I was going to be here and listen to the people, that Dixon was going to be here, and then.
What time is that Sunday?
We still have a meeting, but.
5:30, okay. Are you going to do anything there?
We're going to get some shit done.
Because I don't think they'll have a council.
They won't be sworn in yet. All right, let me work my magic here.
Listen, we said we've got time, it's forever, it's no fun, this is the big week, isn't it? You know, don't get exhausted, plenty of rest. How you doing? Everything good?
It's bad enough, but I, I just ruined them.
Paul, is he supposed to give us something, too?